Hi there Jim.
Hey, what's going on Matt?
How you doing sir?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Very good. Empty, empty room here, I'm just getting my stuff together. But, uh, good to see you.
You as well.
What, uh, what kind of dark mysterious setup do you have there? Are you, are you, are you safe?
I have one of these, I have one of these like, um, desk lamps that's super bright and causing the rest of the area to become much darker. Trying to configure this so that it doesn't look like I'm, doesn't look like I'm hiding out a cave in Afghanistan.
Undisclosed location, yes. Or, or just, um, an old fashioned scholar with his, uh, working, uh, working by candlelight.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll get my stuff together and be back to you in a minute.
Okay.
Hello.
Hey Tom, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Hey.
Hi Matt.
Turned into a very afternoon.
Yeah, it sure did. Josh and I both kind of lost track of time and didn't get out of there until a little after five.
Oh really?
Uh, just, you know, it was so gray, there wasn't really any change in the lighting or anything. And I haven't been in the office in a while, so I wasn't really used to it. That's right.
Jim, we've got our, um, the field work for our annual audit going on now.
What's that?
The field work for our annual audit is going on now. So the, uh, the accountant comes and pulls a bunch of files from our books and checks it all.
And they spend two days in the office, kind of randomly pulling, you know, check stubs that we've written and, and going over documents, mostly scanning in a whole bunch of stuff. And then they take it all back to the office with them and spend the next month or two putting it all together. And, uh, month or two if we're lucky, in the past, it's, it's been a bit longer than that, but.
Yeah, so look for that, look for that, Sam. Nice to be back on that.
Oh, um, was I, was I supposed to call in and talk to you and the mayor? Or was that something you were gonna reach out to me for? It sounded like from your last email that people were reaching out to you directly.
I got a couple of, um, got a couple of calls scheduled. I feel like we're in good shape for Monday's meeting, but if there's anything that you want to go over beforehand, tomorrow or Monday, you can call about it.
I, I talked offline to Josh Ball about the request for funds for the, um, I guess it's not quite to that stage yet, but the, the pricing he got on a new server for the police department.
You got it.
And he offered to, he, he, he was able to go a little more in depth into the, the reasoning behind it. And he offered to put together, um, sort of a, an outline of the where, when, why, and how, kind of, on that whole thing. I still think it's a, it's a little outside of the scope of what we need to spend, but it sounds like it would set us up for.
Yeah, I, I kind of feel the same way. I need the explanation of.
I guess maybe that's something that's worth considering. But anyway, three times, and then he's gonna say.
I need to hear from him why we shouldn't just be buying, you know, uh, four terabyte hard drives for a hundred dollars and get anyone away with it.
Right.
Because the storage has gotten so much cheaper.
Yeah, he explained, he, he explained a lot of his reasoning and, and, uh, I, I don't have the technical expertise to, to regurgitate it. That's why I asked him to kind of put it in some kind of presentation format.
That's what work sessions are for.
It'll help us kind of make it informed.
That's what work sessions are for.
If, 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 if it's not broke, don't fix it. That's kind of my position, like, nobody's been like, oh my God, where's our video footage? Then I don't see the need to spend eighty-five hundred dollars on it, so. But we'll see, we'll see what he produces.
Sorry guys, my internet's getting a little buggy here. If I keep having trouble with it, I'm just gonna, uh, close up and run down to join you in the town hall mat.
Okay. How are you sir?
Great, absolutely.
Okay. Good choice.
Have one in the office for eleven? There's it. You're welcome, get with it.
If I wasn't, if I wasn't having to keep track of a bunch of papers, absolutely.
But.
Okay, it's okay. Have a chew ice cream cone, honey. Not, not open this here with the, uh, with the gators.
I, I detected that, uh, that distinct, uh, northern twang.
Man comes prepared.
He bring cookies?
He bought ice cream cones.
He bought what?
Ice cream cones, he was in the freezer cabinet at Lucky's.
Yeah, you better watch out, you better watch out, he might be trying to, uh, have an open house and sell Victory Hall on you. You gotta watch these real estate agents.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi Lisa.
I wasn't supposed to be here, I was planning to log in from home because I have to run after this country brought to Lynchburg. Yes, the only things to do tonight. Yeah, but I don't have internet at home right now.
What happened?
You know, I don't know, it's serious, that's what happened.
Yeah.
Like, this is, this is, we can have the, um, I complained that my internet was slow. I don't think it's slow, my boyfriend said it's slow. But it was perfectly fine for me, he just does like streaming and all sorts of stuff, it's more than everything else. So he complained. So I called him, then I said, too big, I need to move over, because I did, it was crashing, and I have to restart it constantly. Yeah. And, and I said the internet's slow. Well, that just broke into me entirely, because they supposedly like did a line test or something, and it hasn't worked in twenty-four hours. Don't know. I don't know, it, it was working, now it's not.
Howdy Alex.
Hey Matt, how you doing?
Hey, good to see you sir, how are you?
It's a pleasure to see you guys too, I hope everything's well.
Yeah, that's, those are luxurious accommodations for you.
Uh, when you're at your mother's crib, it's pretty.
Good to be home.
It is.
How's classes going for you?
That's okay, just kind of starting to pick up that, you know, mid-fall little, little rise forward, so just, uh, just stay current and stay ahead, so, that's not too bad.
Well, I appreciate you tuning in here, see, um, see how things go and what, um, if any other connects to you for.
Absolutely, I'm looking forward to it Matt, thank you.
Wonderful.
All right.
Hello Susan, how are you?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get in.
I think you're in.
I am, I don't, I don't see anybody.
Oh, well I see you.
Okay. Yeah, I have Zoom installed, launch meeting, I'm trying to do that. Uh, yeah.
They're chopping.
Hey, hey Matt, Matt.
No.
Is that Bill Hyson?
You, you guys at home are missing it, we have ice cream here.
Yeah, I told, I told Matt, I said, you better watch out. Matt Holt's a real estate agent, he might be hosting an open house in your, in your offices there and, uh, and selling, selling the place from underneath.
I don't want the bot. All right.
Um, all right, let's see, we've got, well, we have two people from Planning Commission. Um, I know Lindsay says that she was not gonna make it, I think Josh did mention he was not gonna make it. Shannon, I haven't heard from her, Matt, do you know if Shannon was planning on making it tonight?
Um, Shannon called me this morning and I think she'll be here.
And she emailed me earlier today to verify the time, so I think she'll be here.
So maybe we'll just wait till she gets here and then we'll get started.
I'm gonna start all over again people, see if I can do this again.
Susan?
Yeah.
Uh, are you on a PC?
No, I'm on a Mac.
Okay, but in the upper right-hand corner of the screen, are you seeing only one person?
I'm not seeing only the. I'm still seeing when system dialogue prompts click a wow.
Oh, okay. Then, uh. I would, I would ignore that, I'd close that. Because we see you and we hear you. So you're in the meeting.
Okay, now I see you, now I see everybody.
Um, okay, so we've got Bill, Matt, Matt, we've got Lisa, Susan, Alex is on, Tom's on, Chris, thank you for joining us. Uh, anybody else in there that I didn't call out? Matt?
I don't see any other participants. See, uh, three people with me in the room here. And, let's see.
Can we form a quorum after the meeting starts if Shannon shows up?
Um, yes, if our membership changes, um, Thomas, could we just take some working notes now? And then if a quorum appears, let the record show when that happens.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't this functionally be like the situation we were talking about with town council? They have enough to do business, but not enough to vote on anything.
That's right.
So yeah, I think you're fine to go ahead.
Hey, and the person who made the question.
Oh, well, and there we go, right.
Shannon, can you just let us know when you're fully, uh, fully engaged?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
Great, I'm, uh, I'm just not sharing video right now because I'm eating dinner.
That's fine, we just want to make sure that you can hear us and we can hear you, so.
Yes.
That seems to be the case, so, um, Matt, I'll hand it over to you to hand it over to whoever needs to be handed over, and let's get this thing going.
Okay, just a moment, Peter Rapp asked for the, um, call-in instructions.
Okay.
Send him those. Okay. The, um, the agenda's quite light, um, because of the, um, little bit different format and goals for this meeting here. I appreciate everybody's time very much, um, the work that's gone into reviewing the documents, talking with neighbors, and continuing to work on the, that outreach and the ideas of this planning process. So what we, um, what we have on, uh, today's agenda, uh, special meeting of Planning Commission with the forum, talking through updates since last meeting, which was August thirty-first, general public discussion, and then focused document work on the small area plan and the few different, um, documents that we've shared around, and then thinking about actions and next steps. This was as far as we got in discussion of the sequence of, of these meetings, so to be thinking about what, um, where we stand with it and what we'd like to do in the, um, in the weeks ahead. Does that sound okay?
That sounds good, do we have any formalities before we get started here?
It's up to you sir.
Well, we have, um, we have three members of Planning Commission, so, uh, so you tell me if we need to knock, then I'll just go into the first, uh, agenda.
I think you're in the clear to just go ahead, you've got your quorum.
Okay. So Matt has just gone over the agenda, if we don't have anything that we want to add to that, then we'll proceed. Anybody want to add anything to the agenda? Does everyone have copies of the agenda right now? I'm gonna take that as a yes.
I think I printed it out.
Okay. Okay, so the, I'm just gonna go ahead, pull it up. Uh, update since last meeting. So, for those of you who were not here, we discussed some different scenarios with housing configurations. Do we have minutes by chance from those past two meetings? I think we, I saw meeting minutes for one of them, but not the other.
I have, I have short minutes, um, from the thirty-first, I was doing double duty on that one, so they're not, uh, they're not, not anything close to, um, verbatim.
That's, I, I, I don't think that's necessary, I think it's just as long as people have a chance to review what we've kind of generally discussed, if they can come up, that'd be good. So maybe, uh, at some point during this meeting, if you can just send those out, if people want to look at them, they can. I don't want to go into a lot of detail, because honestly, I don't remember a lot of the detail, we met with, um, we had a gentleman on from Andrew Miller, I think was his name, on from Devant Housing Alliance, and kind of went through what they would potentially be willing to get involved in, um, and what their role would be. We talked about some different technical stuff, I don't know that we had a lot of really specific actual items on that meeting, so.
That's right.
Um, for this meeting's agenda, we're gonna be doing public, so it's public discussions. We've got, out of the members that are in attendance here, I think only Chris Wade is not, um, permanent member of this group, although you've been here obviously a number of times. Do you have anything you want to, um, weigh in with at the beginning? I know in the past you've just wanted to listen, but I. I'm gonna take that and move on. So, uh, something we haven't really done on, in previous meetings was close the public discussion. Um, and that's resulted in some, some members of the public weighing in later on, when it's a little more technical. So I'm gonna make a formal closing of the public discussion at this point. And so that if we have any, any way in from the public, it, it, later on in the meeting, if someone joins, that's fine. But I just wanted, Matt, if you can just make it clear that we're in, we're out of the public discussion realm, so if anybody has feedback, it's not gonna be a kind of a long, ongoing thing, it just, you know, they're, they're welcome to weigh in briefly, but then we're gonna.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, the topic for this meeting is gonna be the focused discussion of revision of the small area plan. Previous meetings, we've been discussing some of the more abstract, uh, elements of the plan. This time, um, we decided that it was a, a good time to tackle some of the more, um, tangible elements of it, so we want to look at the actual document and kind of work towards some revisions that are gonna make it more functional. Matt did a lot of work on it, um, between meetings and, um, was able to get it down to about forty-five pages, exactly forty-five pages, um, which is, I feel like, and I think the consensus is that that's a lot more manageable, both for us as a group, but more importantly, obviously, um, the public and, uh, town council, planning commission as a, as a, at large, and, um, developers as well, so I think that we're really making progress on that. I think we have notes from Susan, and I believe Bill may have sent some in as well. So, uh, if, if either one of you want to kind of go through some of those notes, Matt, if you have them up and, and if they want to go through them, um, as a screen share, that might be good to kind of run through them real quick. Obviously, um, Matt, you're gonna be the one making the revisions, so we don't necessarily have to get too crazy about analyzing it. But as we're reading through these revisions, anyone else who's on the call who thinks that the revision is unnecessary or wants to kind of modify that a little bit, well, you know, you're welcome to weigh in. And basically, the end of reviewing those revisions, um, in, in brief, then if it, nobody has any issues, then we'll, then we'll, um, go ahead and have approved Matt to make those changes.
That, that sounds good, I'm happy to share, um, any of these three documents on the screen as we're talking about them. I sent those around, I think, to everyone present before the meeting. If you don't have access to these, just let me know and I'll send them along. I also have markup copies of, um, the three items that came through the email here now. Black pen and purple pen, uh, for any changes that you want to make, so I can track the progress of the things that we talk about, uh, today. And anything that we agree to with this meeting, I can get done quickly and turn it off.
Susan, I think you and I may have overlapped a little bit, I made some notes on some of the beginning pages that seem to be the easy, content for me to kind of wrap my head around and make some changes to, so, um, I, I think you were the first one to send out your notes. So if, Matt, would you be able to share her notes and we can kind of run through those?
Sure.
And then, and then maybe before we get to Bill's notes, I think, Bill, did you have some notes you, that you sent out as well, or?
Yeah, I sent out a bunch.
You did?
Yeah.
Maybe just before we move to Bill's notes, because I didn't have a chance to really go through your notes in detail, I just went all over the place. Maybe I'll just compare my notes to Susan's and we can just kind of figure out what we want to do with any, any conflict between, um, her proposal visions and mine. And then we'll jump onto Bill's notes, and then we'll just kind of open it up to everybody else to, to run through, and anyone else that hadn't submitted any notes. And I, I, I'm not meaning to give preference to folks who sent notes in advance, because that wasn't the intention. As I mentioned, the, the purpose of the meeting was to kind of collaborative process. I, I think it's good that we have some notes to, to start with, um, to kind of be a catalyst for kind of getting the discussion going. But I don't want to spend too much time on notes that we already have pretty tight, because I, I do want this to be somewhat of a collaborative process, so. So let's run through, um, is that Susan's notes right now that we're looking at?
Okay, well, I think in my cover memo, when I sent them out, I expressed some of my, um, basic concerns, and, uh, one was, I still don't think that there is enough distinction between what is the town's responsibility and what is the developer's responsibility. And, and that's a very important distinction, I mean, even, even when, uh, we're talking about, uh, things that, uh, you know, in, in Matt's one about, uh, we should do this, or we should do the various, the various options, it's still, to me, when I'm reading it as the planner, it sounds like it's something that the town is about to do, uh, or would like to do. And clearly, those are gonna be the responsibility of a developer. What we can do is set out the parameters and the developer will come to us and say, yeah, I like this one, and here I'm gonna do a conceptual plan for that. But it's not the town's responsibility to, uh, repurpose the, the factory. And that there were a couple of this, of clear distinctions in there, one was a bit about the wetlands park, whether it was on the town property or the, or the factory property. It's, the town can't prescribe what's gonna happen on private property until a developer comes forward. And, and that, that's a legal distinction, I think, you know, and as, as a, as a former park planner, I would, I've had too much experience planting parks to know that you don't want to put a fitness trail in the middle of a wetlands. Most you can do is put a boardwalk or a trail or something like that, but to put something that's gonna get a lot of heavy use doesn't work, but that's immaterial. That's the detail. I just took a different tack to it, it's a totally different way of organizing the whole thing. It's, it provides some clearer, some clearer themes, uh, it focuses on as much, um, as what is happening in the, in the current town as of what happens on the, and in the, um, on the tire factory site. And I think there needs to be that balance. And we can start working, uh, the, whatever happens, the recommendations don't, don't have to be sequential, they can be, uh, happening at the same time, some of the things can happen in short term, some of the things can happen in long term, but you can start planning on the long-term things, uh, while you're still working on the short-term things. Some of them are obviously gonna be easier than others. And some of them will retake, will rely on town planning and town budgets and going after grants, but you can still start the long-range planning at the same time that you're doing the immediate things that are within the, the two-year budget of the town council.
Susan, can I, can I just throw something in there real quick before we get too off, far off the point that you made about the, the, making a distinction between the town's responsibility and the developers? Something that might be worth adding to simplify that issue, rather than constantly reiterating it throughout or rewording, you know, a large number of sections, is to simply state near the beginning that unless otherwise stated, any proposed, um, parks or wetlands or, or, um, inspections or whatever, whatever the necessary, you know, the pertinent, um, changes or actions that might be taken, unless otherwise stated, they are the responsibility of, of a developer, not the town. The town, um, is simply laying out some, some groundwork for ideas that would, that would be, you know, beneficial. The town is not taking on responsibility to initiate any of those changes. And maybe something like that, somewhere near the beginning in the first third of the document, so that as we start to see some of these proposed ideas, whether it's, you know, green spaces or, um, you know, inspections on the levee or environmental studies or whatever like that, that there is a clear statement that, you know, bold and kind of distinct on its own, that says, we're expecting the developers to do this and all of that. I think maybe that, that's the tone for the rest of the document, so that we don't have to kind of go back and critically analyze every single paragraph to make sure that that's conveyed.
Right. Well, I think, Jim, I think the only place that that's really applicable is in the scenarios for the development of tire factories. Because all of the other things that, that certainly I had in, in, in my approach to it, are really within the town's purview. They're long-range planning for the town, uh, they're only, some of them were only considerations, but, but when you get to dealing with, uh, putting out a scenario for a private property and a, and a, and a developer, then that, that could all be contained in, in however you want to approach the tire factory and, and make that distinction at that point, certainly. The rest of it, uh, is, I think, within the, the town purview. But that, that's.
So I guess the gist of what I'm saying is, is there, is there a, a way that we can do that in sort of one go and not have to go back and reword a lot of, a lot of sections to reflect that, so that we don't, you know, so we can kind of speed that process up? So is there a way we can just put that somewhere in the text of the document that says, you know, maybe it says at the beginning of whatever section we feel like that's most pertinent to?
Right, that's what I'm saying, when you get to the, the redevelopment of the tire plant site, that's where you want to put that language for sure.
Okay, okay, that makes sense, good, good. So maybe, maybe at some point, um, you, you and Matt can sit down and talk about that, um, and figure out where that needs to go, and then we can review whatever that was to make sure that everybody kind of makes sense to everybody, but I think that's. Okay, I'll let you. Okay, I'll let you. Matt, do you want to pull her document back up?
Well, and, and the other thing was, was my, you know, my, my final comment, I guess, about make no small plans. Small plans have no magic to disturb men's blood. I just, it just seemed in a lot of places that it was a little bit too constrained. And the other thing that I didn't put in there is I think we really need to go back and look at that implementation schedule. It is probably not going to happen that FEMA will have a revised map within the next three months. There is just too much going on between now and February. So I really think in, in light of what's been happening, in light of what's happening with the government, in light of COVID, that we really need to go back and look at what that schedule is for implementation. And I know Matt is, is dearly devoted to that smart approach from, from Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. But, but there may be some instances where it makes more sense to have a range of time, a short range of objectives for certain things, and then a longer range of subjective for, for other things, such as the development of the tire factory, which clearly is a long-range project. But there are things that can be done as far as town resided revitalization and planning for the Greenway, which is practically in place, that could be done now, signage, those kinds of things can be done now. But you need to start working on the long-range stuff as well, obviously.
Susan, I think that's a really good point. And that was one of the, that was one of my favorite elements that I saw in what you sent, that instead of getting hung up on a sequence of recommendations and trying to find the right path from one to the next, just group them by theme and that helps to make more sense of them. And then, sure, the things that are within the town's control, we can, we can multitask a little bit. But we say, we're going to budget for this and then we're going to budget for this. But especially for all of the things that are outside of the control of town staff, we can't make a business owner do a certain thing at a certain time. So we're going to identify it as a goal within a theme of the environment, walkability, or business. But we, we don't know whether it's going to happen in one year or 10 years. So I think maybe using a little icon or a color code to show that the goal's kind of going loops. And let's see, the, you put the current document up here. It's got a flowchart, which we could easily replace with a grouping if these boxes were different colors for different themes and sort of clustered. Instead of saying, we're going to do it in this order, we might have the opportunity to do number seven before number three, and we would want to take advantage of that opportunity. I like that.
Good.
So Susan, I'm, I'm just, I'm rereading your, your document. And I guess maybe I confused yours with, with, with Bill's, so I apologize for that. It looks like you've kind of drafted an entirely new document. Is that fairly accurate?
Admittedly, I did. I went back. I went back to the, the Rio Road. Matt showed us a glimpse of it from, it's an Alamo County Small Area Plan. And it, to my way of thinking, it, it just really focused the, the various options and, and objectives. And, and I started, I started everything out with an action verb, which I think some of the, some of the actions need, need to be more forcefully presented, put it that way.
So let me, let me suggest this, maybe something, obviously, that's a lot of work that went into that. And I appreciate that. I, I like the verbiage. I like the way it's worded, the parts that I'm reading. But due to the fact that we already have kind of a set document in front of us, maybe what we can recommend that Matt does is kind of review it, twenty-four pages. Maybe he can review it. He can get a sense for the layout, the structure, the way things are worded, and maybe make some modifications based on what he sees as being like a better flow of information, a better wording of things, a better order of things, and kind of incorporate certain elements of the document into, into the existing one. But I think to try to go through twenty-four pages right now of an entirely fresh document may be a little bit daunting for what we have the time and the resources for.
No, I think what's important is from what I put forward, it is an alternate vision, no question about it. And, and you all have to decide what works best. It's, it does organize things in, in themes, as it says. And some of the little things in those themes can happen right away. Some of the things will take a grant, some of the things will be long-term. And I did take the great liberty, I admit, of, of extending it beyond the small downtown area, because I think, I think it is all one town and it is, and it is related. And, and it's useful to look at all those things in, in concert with one another. Particularly, I think it's important to emphasize the emphasis of the relationship with the river and the, you know, the economic benefits of, of really working on the river and access to the river and, and the recognition that will come to Scottsville from being part of those state plans.
And that's a, that's a good point of common ground. That shows up in all of the outreach that we've done. It's what, it's what gives us our identity and creates a lot of the quality of life here. So that, that should certainly be a, a theme that comes through.
So I, I'm giving a little bit of back and forth and dialogue here. I'd like to give everybody else a chance to kind of weigh in and, and have a chance to talk about what they think about. We'll discuss them farm, and then once we have a chance to kind of discuss that, I'd like to jump on to Bill's document and then we'll work from there.
Yeah, I would say I, I agree. I was impressed with the amount of work that went into that. And there were certainly points that maybe flowed a little bit more dramatically and made a little bit more sense. So I agree, I could match it with that and see what would be the most pertinent changes and let's go ahead and incorporate that.
Sure. Matt, do you feel comfortable with, with that process?
Absolutely. I've, I've read it twice and circled some sentences, paragraphs, and, and themes that I thought were super helpful. So I'll, I'll check up with Susan promptly and, and go over those notes and see what we can do. I didn't get a chance to kind of cross-reference them and pick out, you know, here's where this should go. Bill's layout was more helpful for that, because it goes through page by page and say, this is what should change on this page. So it's going to take, it's going to take more work to integrate these two documents. But Susan, can you help me with that?
Oh, that's great. Happy, happy to, happy to do that, for sure.
And Shannon just sent a message that she's gone through and made notes about how to incorporate the document. So maybe Shannon can consider, can be involved in that process as well.
Thank you so much.
Yep, no problem. Yeah, I liked how Susan's, I liked that how it was grouped into themes and it was very action-oriented. And I liked how you took the SWOT analysis and you put it into each of the themed sections of the document. I thought that was really helpful. Great.
So I'm just going to say this, I, I feel, I feel not super comfortable about having one-on-one meetings where someone's sitting down and meeting with Matt and going through a bunch of proposal visions, because I think that we don't want one particular person in the group to kind of steer the direction of the document. And so I think it's a good idea to have a, a third person and if someone's not emotionally attached to that doc, the document, no offense, Susan, but, and so I think I want to make sure that if Susan sits down with Matt, I think it'd be good to have Shannon there as well. So I think the three of you should sit down.
I would agree. I'm, I'm not a, I'm not, I'm trying very hard not to be attached to it.
And the, the one at the, at the greatest intellectual and emotional distance is Alex, who is interested in keeping in touch with this as a student project here in his second year of, of master's work. So sir, I will let you know when these meetings are happening. And if you continue, if we can peel off any research or graphic design tasks out of this, I would love to keep you in the loop and get a couple more man hours out of you.
Absolutely. And, you know, Susan, Matt, Jim, and just everybody present, you know, I'm here to help. You know, I'd like to take the town on as a client and help you guys work through some of the policy issues. Get up with this. I think, you know, already hearing it from Susan, I, I'm starting to see and get a better picture of it. So I'm here to help and, and I want to help. So don't hesitate to use me and, you know, we'll coordinate and I'm always available, so.
Terrific.
Great, thank you. And maybe, Matt, if you guys set up a time to do that, maybe just reach out to everyone that's on Planning Commission and that's been participating in this. I do see a lot of emails that are going out that are either, that are only directed at Planning Commission or only directed at certain members. I want to make sure that all the communication going forward that stems from this meeting, these meetings, is including both Planning Commission and everyone that's participating on a regular basis that's not part of Planning Commission. So Susan, Matt, Paul, Bill Heist, and anybody that's, that's not necessarily, you know, PTO rep, that's not on Planning Commission, but that's pretty much been involved in this from the get-go and is regularly involved. I'd like to make sure that we're communicating all this to everybody anytime something goes out. So Matt, if you could just let folks know, so anybody that has time and wants to sit on that, unless you feel like it's better with a smaller group to go through that document. But, but that's something that might be worthwhile to do. So just, I'll leave that up to you. How do you want to handle that?
I'll, I'll make an email group with a, a nickname, so that I can easily send to everyone involved.
Great.
And then if you want to reply, I'll listen to that in three, two.
Yeah, and, and definitely include Susan Firehawk. We've been trying to get, or Karen, sorry, Karen Firehawk. I'm trying to get her involved in these meetings. I feel like her, her understanding with being on Planning Commission for the county and the work that she does would be really valuable. And I wanted her involved in these meetings and I'm disappointed that she's always been busy. But I definitely want to make sure she's looped in on these as well, so whenever she has free time, she can attend. Anyways, move, that's kind of a side, a side note, but, okay, so let's, let's move on. Bill, do you want to kind of run us through what you, the changes you made? And short of actually going, you know, through the entire document, well, I don't know. Let me, let me just look at this for a second here. This is a lot. You guys.
Let me just say that I, I really like Susan's organization format. I think that, that makes it a lot more logical and sensible. And, and I think it could be a shortened document the way she has it laid out. But I, you know, I want to, I like the way that it's, what I did is mostly just go through wording. I, the first thing, though, I do think that the name should be Western Scottville Downtown, because I think that is, I think that's confusing, because it's about the plant primarily, a few other factors. I mean, most of it is about that. So I, I think it should be Western or something like that, rather than the downtown.
I, I, I don't know that we, I don't know, Bill, sorry to interrupt. I just, I don't know that we have the, the authority at this level to, to authorize that. We can present it, but I almost feel uncomfortable presenting it at this point. I would rather do that when we have a final draft and say, here's the final draft. One, one final note, we would like to consider modifying the title to this. But if we'd say, we want to change the title, then it feels, I think, Planning Commission and Town Council is going to be like, whoa, 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 you're changing the scope of the project. Even if we explain to them, no, 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 it's just to clarify. I think they're going to get confused and say, you're changing the scope and this starts to make it sound like it's an indefinite project. So I'm just looking at the, the optics that that name change brings. I, I think maybe we can propose that right before we submit it with some explanations. Say, we have finalized document. We want to, we, we want you to consider maybe make, you know, approving a name change to it. But I don't think we have the, the purview to do that with this committee. And I, I don't know that we're at the point to do that. So let's table that until we get a little bit closer to the final, the final version and, and then we'll bring that up.
We can't agree to include both sides of Valley Street in the plan.
Yes, that's been done.
That has been done?
Yes, the, the.
Which I think makes sense, but I just, I didn't realize that that was something we finalized.
This, this document has this purple line moved to the other side of the street.
Okay, I see that.
Any objections?
No, yay. Bravo.
Okay.
I guess, I, I, I guess that the source of this document was, was, was that Planning Commission? Or is that Town Council, basically them saying, we need this document? Who, who was basically the, the original, like, authorizing body that, that requested this document?
The, the comprehensive plan says make a comprehensive, make a small area plan. So when Town Council adopted the comprehensive plan, that gave me the staff directive to apply for the grant that funded the small area plan work.
And the small area plan could be any block of town that we considered to be, you know, distinct and important. Is that right?
Let me show you the key page from the town plan. So this is in the economic development section of the town plan. And it's the, it's the goal related to the factory redevelopment. And so how are we going to redevelop the tire plants to make a mix of opportunities that fits with our character?
Okay.
We're not sure. So we're going to make a small area. So, and then it goes through, we're going to do community engagement. We're not going to spot rezone. We're going to talk about traffic, consider a mix of uses. And then once we have the small area plan, how are we going to implement it? Rezone, get funding, work with the county, try to make the approvals happen quickly.
So my question, my question for you then is, Bill's request to change the name of the plan, is that something that we have the purview to do? It sounds like it is based on what you told me.
I think it is, but to go back, just when, when we started doing this, we thought about just doing the factory. I met with TJ and ETC, and they specifically said that we could not just do one piece of property. So you had to include other pieces of property. So you have to have at least a neighboring property or two. And it, you know, so it was, would be the properties next to it, maybe the school. So it expanded, it expanded. So the small area plan has to include other properties besides the factory. But it's really about the factory. That's why we, we did that. So I, you know, I, I don't know how the downtown actually got in there, but it makes sense to have that in there too. But, you know, it's about the parks and about the neighborhood and about this work area. It's the whole area there. Anyways, I, I just think it's the whole western part. Anyway, I, I'll update you a lot.
Well, well, so my, I, yeah, and that makes sense. And I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not disputing anything in particular there. I'm just saying, it, you know, for, for technical question for Matt is, can we change the name of this at this point? Is this, is this going to be a problem? And if it's not a problem to change it, then we would obviously need to discuss that. I don't want to spend too much time on it, because I don't think it's that big of a deal one way or the other, but.
There's no mandate about what the title is or what the map area is. You can, you can change this, you can change that purple box in the draft and you can certainly rename it if WDSAP isn't an active in your life.
Bill, can you plan on at the next meeting? We're, we're going to, we're going to probably try to wrap this up in the next couple of meetings. I, I, I talked to Matt and I feel like we're getting to a point where we're ready to do that. But I definitely, I, I'm definitely wanting to hear a discussion on that topic. I don't want to spend too much time on that, because I don't think that's in keeping with, strictly speaking, with the nature of this meeting. But let's plan on the next meeting, Bill, sitting, maybe having you a little closer to a microphone, because I'm having trouble hearing you right now. But at, at a future meeting, present a case to change the name. And let's have a, let's have a discussion on that and then let's decide to change it or not change it. And let's, let's make that, let's make that a firm yes or no at the next meeting. So let's make sure that's included in our next agenda. I just haven't had time to consider it. I don't think, I don't think everyone else has had time to consider it. And like I said, I think we, without having had time to consider it, I think it was going to take us a lot longer, this meeting, to discuss that effectively. So, okay, so Matt, how would you like to handle these notes? Is this something that you want to maybe incorporate into your meeting with, with Shannon and Susan and Alex? Or, or, I mean, I don't know, if, if you're taking Susan's notes. If, if you're taking Susan's notes and taking Bill's notes, obviously some of that's going to be overlapped.
Some of it shows definite points of agreement where Bill and Susan touched on the same thing. And maybe they said it in different ways, but hmm. Yeah, I, as I, as I was looking through Bill's edits, I, I found them by and large very helpful. And my, my sheet is, is covered with a lot of check marks as, as I, as I find many of them quite helpful. So could I, could I raise a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Based, based on your comments.
So a lot of those, like, being, being more clear or brief, I guess, in some ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and, and I think this, this gets to the, the intent of the group about, you know, what are we trying to do with it? So for example, Bill, you had, you deleted the page that had the side by side cables that showed the different, the different kinds of engagement that we did.
Yeah, I, I think this is to be a, a list of engagement, unless we have, you know, information about those meetings, you know, like, I've seen some of that where they have the engagement, but they actually say what happened to the engagement, not just the fact that they had it. Because I never thought this was really a public engagement, but I mean, there were some concerns or issues raised or whatever, like, it seemed like they were mostly information section. So the fact that we had some engagement was really, it doesn't say anything about the engagement, but it's just that they, I guess, informed people that there was a small area. So that, I, I think is, you could just list that.
Yeah, so that's.
That would simplify that.
Sure, that's most of, most of this page, this page and this page with the timeline and summary of the findings. I think, do you also want to delete the quotes?
The quotes are okay, I don't care, but, I don't care.
Okay.
I don't care. I mean, it's kind of nice, we have different opinions, but, but it just, that page just says that, you know, there was some meetings. But I think you just listed the meetings, unless there was something specific that was brought up in those meetings.
Sure, documentation of the process, right? If, if someone cares, how did you arrive at these results to say, yes, we did a public engagement process? But if you're just looking for, hey, what are your recommendations, I don't care how you got there, then.
It seems like these are engagements too, maybe they could be included in that too, at the end of stuff.
Oh yeah, that's, that's.
The ones that we, all the planning commission is, this is, that too, might be.
Because then you're going to have to add another whole page for all of our, all of our workings since May.
Yeah.
How important does this group think it is to document the process that we've gone through?
I think it can be summarized in a couple of paragraphs, just, just with the, the dates of, of the, of the, those focus meetings. And the more important ones were the larger presentations of the results of the survey. And, and mine, you know, my, my draft includes those charts for the results of the, of the, of the, of the priorities for housing for all of, there were, there were three or four of them that were in the plan and.
Let's remember that we're trying to keep this document short and to the point, so I, I think that we can outline the means of, of community outreach, but I don't think, necessarily think we need to itemize every single instance. So we can say we did public surveys, we had public town halls, we had feedback presented to Town Council and Planning Commission, and we had special meetings for, you know, committee, you know, for Planning Commission, whatever we want to call it, you know, refer to ourselves as. I don't think we need to itemize every single meeting that we had, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
If somebody really wants that information, they can reach out to the town offices and say, hey, can you give me a list of that? I don't know why they would ever want that information.
I, I appreciate that feedback, I, I tend to be conservative in defending the amount of public engagement because it's a common criticism that there wasn't enough.
Well, I appreciated it when I first wrote the plan, but I see the point, maybe now that everyone knows that, maybe move it to the appendix.
Okay. Sure, and Susan's version does a good job of summarizing all the outreach in two pages.
And you could always put those charts in the appendix.
Okay.
Well, and, and the other thing to consider here is that after we submit this, if people, you know, say, hey, you really need to have this in there and just determine that, yeah, we really need it. We can always say, okay, Town Council, we added these two pages or this section and they can vote and pass it. They probably won't even read it anyways because they probably don't care. I mean, honestly, if you make something small like that, they're probably not going to care. But you know, they think, great, fine, thanks, you know, that's fine, as long as they're going to trust that whoever did the process made the right decision in that situation because it's not the end of the world either way. So if we need to add stuff that we feel like is necessary later, we can, but I think the meat and potatoes of this document is our focus right now. So I don't really care about going into too much detail on how we got to what we got to. If people feel like it's not detailed enough, then we can add more into it or we can add it to the appendix.
Okay.
Let's, let's, let's move on past that. So, so Matt, do you feel confident that you can take Bill and Susan's documents and, and kind of work that, work those two into your document in a fairly not strenuous fashion?
I have, I have one sort of infrastructure kind of question because they, they worded it in a little bit different way. And it's about this, it's about the threshold for the study of the second river. So Susan makes the important point that we want to have a traffic impact analysis for any major development. And that's the, that's the Admiral County standard, they require it. And their threshold for major development is generating more than a thousand trips. We have.
More than a thousand what?
A thousand vehicle trips per day. We have a couple of scenarios that are on the bubble of eight hundred, nine hundred trips. But I, I think I appreciate Susan's guidance there that taking the study, you know, twenty thousand dollars worth of engineering work gives us really important information since we've been so concerned about this. So Susan's version says, do a traffic study and we'll, we'll decide about infrastructure needs based on the result of the study.
And that would be the result of a, of a developer coming and looking at it and wanting to do something, then they would need to do the traffic size, is that correct?
They have.
So why don't we bump, why don't we bump all of our scenarios that are on the cusp of a thousand, over a thousand, modify the numbers a little bit, make them a thousand. So that we just say, okay, if it's even close to a thousand, we know that they're going to get that studied.
Yeah, sure, if you add, if you take this eight hundred or this nine ninety, I mean, it doesn't take much to put nine ninety over a thousand, change the numbers just a little bit.
Quick the numbers.
So the, the problem that, that, that creates with Bill's language is that he adds what would require a second access.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that I'm afraid is prejudging the outcome of the traffic.
Well, that was, I didn't make too many changes, you know, stuff like that, but the one was about the English strong stating what requires a second access and what doesn't. So that, that should be clear, so because some of them told him, you know, you could do it as is, others require a second access. But I think with this point scenario, you should have that really stated, or just like things you can have.
How do you know that without doing the study?
Can I, can I interrupt real quick before we continue? I'm having trouble hearing Bill, is it, is it, am I the only one having trouble?
I, I can't hear her very well either.
Does this work here? I guess that, does this one have work?
Pick up, no.
I don't know if that microphone's working.
Okay.
You want to come closer? Does this one work, can you hear her at this one?
Lisa, I can hear you fine, so maybe, maybe.
Okay, what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I think it needs to, there seem to be some debate about, about having a second access. And some of the scenarios I would think would require a second access because they're huge, they're large. And so those scenarios, I think it should be stated that, you know, for too many houses and apartments that they got to have a second access.
Well, I'm going to interrupt you one more time here, which is that the only time that we can require a second access is if it's in current ordinance and right now, as far as I know, the only restriction is that anything over fifty housing units requires a second access. But we don't have anything else in the book, so if we phrase it that way in this document, it means nothing if it's not actually backed by, you know, zoning or something like that. So someone correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Well, I think the idea is that maybe fifteen, twenty years down the road, maybe they could get a second access and you could have a scenario like that. But otherwise, I think we'd have to eliminate them from the package, but just using what we have now. And we would only have a, you know, a specific scenario, but.
Well, so you're, but what I, what I'm saying is, if you're suggesting that we need a second access for X, Y and Z and right now only X requires a second access, it's, it's directly in contradiction to our current zoning. And it's not accurate and it's irrelevant to, you know, to what people need to know because it's not true. So I just want to make sure that unless I'm wrong, if we're recommending a secondary, if we're saying you need a secondary access in this document, but nothing else is telling developers that, then it's not, it can't be in this document. So I, I can be wrong, but I think that maybe there's some scenarios where, where we're, you know, misstating what, what cases.
Well, one way to look at this would be in phase development if, and we, we agreed at the very beginning that we weren't going to do it this way, that we wanted to have the factory addressed first, so it doesn't get to be a white elephant like the landmark building down on the mall. But I would think that however you rewrite the, or write the new PUD zoning ordinance or however you write one, that there would be very clear requirements for parking associated with any development in a PUD or of development in the factory as well. So I, I don't think that, I mean, we presume that by the time this moves forward and a developer is looking at this thing, that there will be at least a draft PUD ordinance that will then address parking as well. I mean, we obviously need to address the impact of traffic and whatever gets developed inside that factory, whether it's offices, whether it's medical, whether it's a hundred more senior apartments or whatever, there will be a traffic impact. And somehow that's got to be folded into it.
If we make recommendations for a second access or any other kind of recommendations, whether it's a certain number of parking spaces, whatever, we need to be very clear that the small area plan sees this as an ideal scenario, but it is not something that currently is required by.
Right.
County ordinance.
But that's not what you said, but that's not what you said.
Well, no, in this scenario, that was saying that if you did this scenario, you would need a second access. But you didn't, you wouldn't say that for all the scenarios, because some of them, you know, are within the limits. So, you know, three or four of those, three or four of those you couldn't do as we are currently done.
Yeah, I think the zoning says if we add one fifty, if we have fifty one, well, you need a second, you know, you're saying everyone needs a second access.
Here's one other one.
Definitely, that's a requirement.
Sure. So to have the double, yeah, the double requirement of whatever you propose must comply with town zoning. And if it is above a certain size, it also requires a traffic study. But it, it perhaps doesn't go without saying that everything you do will comply with zoning.
Right, but I think the thing was saying that the ones that are above that certain count, or zone, have to have a second access to go through. That's what the zone was, you need to put down there.
Okay.
So he was just reiterating, even though that's the zone, he's reiterating, this is the requirement of the zone.
Matt, would it, would it make sense if the way it was written was, was based on the, on the traffic impact that, that any number of vehicle trips per day over a certain amount would require a second access rather than pegging it strictly to residential development?
I, well, no, because that's what the traffic impact analysis does. That the example that I sent you from Petersburg was a hundred and sixty eight houses, but they found only eight hundred and forty trips a day because of the type of community that it was and the road that it was opening up on was big enough that they recommended no change. They said the street can handle it just fine.
Do we have the?
It depends on the question. So it, it's, it's a way of sort of punting the question to say, we're going to require the engineer to do a specific study and if they find a need for improvements, we will require them to increase. But we don't, we don't know what the proposal is going to be, what its trip generation is going to be and what the infrastructure needs for.
So if we're, if we're requiring a traffic impact survey, a study, and forgive me if I'm phrasing that incorrectly, for over a certain number of trips, is that something that already exists somewhere? Is that a rule somewhere or is that something we're just putting in the stock?
Yes, Admiral County did a presentation on this topic a week, two weeks ago to their board and planning commission. And they had a really nice page that was a table of, here's different uses that are thresholds for what we know generate a thousand trips. And I found that table to be super helpful for shorthand of this kind of project is small and this kind of project is large and requires a study.
Okay, so as long as, as long as there's something that, that this is referring to and it's not just our rules, then I, I think that makes sense to have that thousand traffic, thousand vehicle impact generate the need for traffic study. But it doesn't generate the need for a second access road at this point. What we could say, we recommend a second access road based on pre-existing conditions with the neighborhood and the streets. Anything over a thousand or even five hundred, you know, recommend, you know, a second access. But again, beyond, beyond passing some change, changing current zoning, you know, ordinances, but.
Right, the, the developer could exploit our rules by planning something that was forty nine houses and a fast food restaurant. And we wouldn't have recourse.
It does suggest that we don't have it in there, that an impact study was, people writing in, then we review.
Can't hear you, Josh.
Sorry, I was asking if part of the, anyone coming into develop, I was under the impression that there had to be an impact study done and that then the results would be reviewed by the town to determine whether or not it's full.
Yeah.
Just the fact that they do an impact study doesn't mean they need to do it.
That's right, that's right, that's our site finding process.
Well, if, if, if the property, it depends on the zoning too, so if it's industrial, they don't need to do anything. It's by right, they can go in there and do anything that zoning currently allows them.
The impacts attack, they can't make a dangerous hazardous situation. So even though it's zoned that way, they still have to do an impact study, to prove that they're not going to be creating a public hazard. Is that not correct?
Right.
It is, just like I said, if I wanted to build a house, that's great, but you still have to prove whether or not I put a driveway in, whether or not I have clear sites, whether or not I have enough road crews, there's all sorts of things. But when you're doing development, that's what the impact studies all about. You don't get the right to just walk in and say, I'm going to put up a nuclear power plant just because it's zoned that way. I also have to prove that the trucks and the traffic and the people coming aren't going to destroy the town. That's the whole idea of an impact study, if I'm wrong, correctly, I'm not trying to.
Well, I mean, by right zoning doesn't mean you're coming in to do what it's so, and I don't think that there is any to prove with an impact study that there is an adverse or, you know, any impact at all if, if what you're doing is allowable, uncorrectly.
If what you're doing is you're asking permission to do something, you have to then demonstrate what the impact is going to be.
If you're by right asking.
Right, you have to demonstrate that you're not doing that.
But what he's saying is, you don't have to do that, you just by right, like back in the factories, if they can actually do factory, they don't like to do anything. They, they accept that by right.
Well, right, so this is, because we're rezoning it, there's, for example, you're a sort of chicken in the egg, right? You're looking at a plan and you're okay with zoning based on what that actually says. But Bill's right, you know, under current zoning, if we have an industrial, they're not going to have to prove that each material, you won't care about our streets because we zoned it for that. They're, they're going to rely on us to, you know, decide whether or not we wanted that impact when we get the zone and so.
Can I, can I ask a question, a couple of questions? Is it the town's intent to develop a new zoning ordinance for a PUD or? enlarged light industrial zoning ordinance? And just have that on the books without ever applying it to the tire factory site? You could just have that on the block, on books and not specifically rezone that property for that particular use? I've never, that, so.
I think that's an option and that's one way to go about this, that you could, you could make a redevelopment zoning district, get that on the books and things like a PUD zone require application for every project. So if we did that, that would be a way of saying, we are ready, we want this to happen, but we're going to scrutinize whatever thing happens. The other way to do it would be to sort of patchwork zoning with our existing ordinances. If we didn't want to, if we said, we don't want the whole thing to be industrial, but maybe some of it stays industrial. We could use our existing zoning and put some residential here, some commercial here, some public here and some industrial here. And we could create mixed use pathways. We would be obligating developers to use certain portions of the site in certain ways, but they would then have certain by right opportunities.
Which, which is
Two different ends of going about it.
But do we really want them to do that? Because I did go back and look at, at the industrial zoning ordinances, which do allow buildings and offices by right.
Yes, they do.
So we, I would think we would want to guard against that. And, and no requirements for traffic as, as, as Jim has said.
Certainly. One of the, if you wanted to give lots of freedom to investors, you could just add apartments as by right in your industrial. And then they'd be able to do a lot of different things there. But it sounds like we don't want to give that much freedom. We do want development control.
So that's why the PUD ordinance makes more sense to me.
Absolutely. And the, the current draft says that.
Right.
Um, okay. So let's, let's keep moving on. I want to run through a document that I put together. It's just a one page, a few quick edits. Matt, I sent them out to the group. So.
I didn't get them, so.
You said you did?
I did not.
Okay. I just sent it out a few minutes ago, so.
You're, you're on it. It just takes it a while to go to space and go.
Matt, did you say you got it or no?
I'll put that up there now.
And if we can do side by side with the pages that it corresponds to as well, that would help.
In the room here, we're looking at this up on the wall. So there's, there's a little bit of room to do both. I apologize if this is too small on your screen at all.
What, what operating system do you have, Matt?
Uh, this is Windows ten.
You should be able to click the, the menu bar at the top and just drag into the corner. It should automatically fill up half the screen.
Oh, really? Never done that.
Yeah, it's great for doing side by side documents. I always do that.
Sorry.
This one on the left is yours, Jim.
Correct, yes.
So Jim, walk us through what we're looking at here. Bye.
Um, I guess maybe I'm seeing something different than you, but I'm only seeing parts of each page. Can we zoom out just a little bit?
That's, that's pretty hard for us to read.
Can, yeah, I got you. Okay. So, so that's fine. Make it whatever's easy for you to read and I'll, I'll, I'll look at my documents on my screen.
I can, I can read this from where I'm sitting.
Okay.
Stand up and closer if you need to.
So, so page four and five. Let me just get that on my screen here.
Okay. So this is copy edited, you did to make it shorter?
Yeah, I just sort of rephrased it a little bit. So purpose of small area plan, which is page four. Scottsville's town council decided to launch this plan. Then there's a history of the money that was brought in, yada, yada. I don't think a lot of that information is really critical for, for the purposes of this. Again, this is information that could be used as an appendix or as needed if somebody requested, you know, that process. But I don't think a developer or the, the general public needs to know that we spent thirty thousand dollars on a grant.
Okay.
If it came from our tax money, maybe it'd be more relevant, but I just don't think it's necessary stuff. Anyways, you can see where I took that. Vision for, for the future. West downtown feels like a healthy neighborhood. Visitors can feel the history right away. I think there's a little bit of superfluous language in that. So I kind of cleaned that up a little bit as you can see. And the pages of
Does that, that's, hang on, this one?
Um, so what, what is the west downtown area and then why a small area plant? Sort of takes elements of both of those pages and kind of condenses them into basically what should fit on one page. So I'll let, I'll let you kind of look at that and, and decide what you like out of that. But I, I think that it just cleans up the verbiage and takes out some information that I don't think people necessarily need to know.
You, you want the first few pages of this to be pretty succinct and punchy.
Exactly.
If you only read the first ten pages, they need to be effective.
I want people to get grabbed early on and not get, not, not get bogged down too quickly. Pages six through seven. Preferred development scenario. Twenty twenty one through twenty thirty, healthy growth. I, these projections are just sort of vague and I just don't know that there's any, anything really strongly supporting that. Maybe that's further on in the document, but I just don't know that this is. I don't know. You guys, you guys can, we'll discuss that as we go. The before and aftershocks don't really feel like they correlate very closely. Like we've got a couple of pictures of the plant and then there's somebody's house. And then there's two people high fiving and a couple walking. Like I just, I just don't know that that really does anything. Like it, maybe it has some good feel mojo to it, but I just don't think it really adds to anything. So I think that and, and, and the preferred development scenario feels a little bit just unsupportable. So that's just my opinion. Well, like I said, you guys don't, you don't necessarily take that out, but that's just my recommendation. Maybe that's something you guys can discuss when you sit down. Page ten, I kind of rephrased that a little bit again, just because I feel like there's some information in here that maybe isn't super pertinent. Town council and the community can make plans for a future vision. What does that mean? Like I think we know that that's probably true without being told that, not anything really, really specific. Regions population is growing, demographic change and market forces affect our situation. It's kind of vague. So I, I rephrase that to say Scottsville proper and greater are both primaries for growth. Careful, considered, considered planning this growth will be well received by town businesses and residents as well as seasonal guests. Traffic is the community's biggest concern. Roads are an infrastructure constraint on what can be built. VDOT can help improve our streets and sidewalks. New streets are possible. I like the fact that we're drawing attention to the traffic. I just rephrased it a little bit. Again, that can be something that maybe you can just kind of side by side compare and see if you like anything out of it. I'm not really concerned about that. Tire factory property is privately owned. That's something I also reference in the next bullet point. State government grant paid for the research in this report and other state programs can help the town achieve its goals. I guess that's helpful, but I'm not really sure that that seems like kind of, kind of, you know, I, I think that just, you know, is, is a given. But again, you know, maybe that's something that people don't, don't think about. Those, those are the few quick edits. That was just something I wanted to throw out there because that's something I, 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 I was kind of focusing on the beginning of the document, both, you know, because of my attention span. I don't have the attention span that Bill and Susan have. But also because I, I think it just gets people's attention early on and we can clean it up a little bit.
I think that sounds like, you know, making something a good executive summary.
Yeah, the, I think the front of this document is going to act that way. And Susan, your layout does the same thing.
Yeah.
And it starts one, two, three, four, or five pages.
So I, I wanted to get through those three pre-formatted documents. We've got about fifty minutes left on our limit. I'd like to wrap up a little student than that, depending on who else wants to add input. I know Bill and Susan, you guys have both had a lot of good input. I, I've obviously taken up a lot of airtime. I'd like to give Lisa and Matt Holt and Shannon a chance to weigh in. And Alex, of course, if you want to weigh in as well, if you have something to add.
I'll wait until we go to the next phase. I don't have a whole lot to add except for the fact that we've got one version that's been edited dozens of times. And we, we've now got three new suggestions, at least three new suggestions for additional changes. And I would really like to see more of the, like the concrete things that need to change to make it flow better, to make it more correct as opposed to moving and formatting. I mean, are we at the page count that we want to be at?
We're pretty close. I'd like to, I'd like to see us at forty, to be honest with you, or less, but, but forty five. We were up to seventy five, eighty, kind of in that range for a while, so.
Right. And we just, we just talked about perhaps getting rid of two more pages and moving them to the appendix. So I, I'd really like to see us focus less on the language and more on like the concrete things. Like are we requiring the traffic survey and, you know, things like that? So that's what, um, that's where I go tonight.
Would you say that, Lisa? You'd like to see more of this on?
The, you know, the the meat and potatoes, what we're, what we need to require, but you know, if we need to differentiate between what's the town versus the developer's responsibility. Do we need a traffic study? You know, changing those to that language, those wording, not, not wording, but changing those things where they need to be changed. But I'm less interested in, you know, the grammatics and, and the sentence structure unless it really helps to clarify. Because everyone can come to the table and present a different version of it and, and then we'll be reviewing or, or Matt and Alex will be reviewing versions for a long time.
So, so the agenda for this meeting was kind of more aligned with what we're doing now and less aligned with what you want to do. A lot of the previous meetings spent more time discussing the substance of the document, like the specific. It's really hard to distinguish this because I think that this has been some of the struggle we've had is just like, what, what is it that we're trying to discuss here? So the technical aspects of the document has been a lot of what our previous discussion has been, like what, how we want this to be. This meeting was more focused around the readability of the document, editing the layout, the flow. So it's a little, a little fluffier, I guess, than previous, some of the previous meetings. It doesn't mean we can't get into a little bit of that, but I just don't want to go too far into that because then, then we lose the opportunity to do what we really haven't done a whole lot of thus far, which is, I guess, again, a little more of the, just the readability and the flow and like, do we need this section? Do we want to ref, you know, do we want to merge these sections? Do we want to expand on these sections? Like things like that, you know, that are a little less technical, a little more about just kind of like editing.
Okay. That's good. That's good.
So what my hope was is to be able to really crunch out some big formatting changes in this document, have one more. Honestly, I think we, I think we can get away with one more meeting. Some of you probably want to do more than that. I'll be honest with you, I'm running out of steam on this. This has just been on, on top of town council and planning commission meetings and just my life in general, I'm running out of steam. But I also feel like, not to seem like I'm trying to run this different ground just because I'm tired of sale, you know, growing. Is that I feel like we have made a lot of progress and we have really improved the document. And I think that with Matt's changes prior to this meeting and with the changes we're recommending in this meeting. And then I'd like to have a final meeting where we do get into some of the more technical stuff again. But again, after the document is pared down, a little more readable, a little, a little bit, makes a little more sense to everybody in the group. We have one more session where we talk about a little bit of technical stuff. And then that is kind of the final thing. And then after that, we can do some emails back and forth if we want to recommend some changes, things like that. So that's kind of where, that's, that's where my head is right now, to be honest with you. And I know the town council wants to see the document in front of it early soon.
Now, between times, do we get together and, and do, do the edits?
Oh, absolutely. With the, the heads up process that we talked about earlier.
Matthew, is there anything you want to say?
I think at this point, we need to put that together. And I agree with what you're saying too.
Can't hear you, Matt.
I'm just saying, I think at this point, if we pull apart, we need to put it back together to be able to look at. We can't address some of the issues that everyone's bringing up until we've got it all put together. I think we pulled it apart very well, but right now I think the main thing is to put it back together so we can go over. Jarring.
No, that makes, that makes sense.
I, I still wonder if we finished it up in one meeting too. I, I'd say maybe it might be a second after that, but realistically, it'd be nice to finish it up. I don't want to rush it either, just because it's a, it's a client party and somebody's buying. But hopefully we could look at the next one that's all together and see if that's, we might do it.
Realistically, once we put that together, we can, unfortunately, let's do that all the time.
So, all right. So let's, let's say I, I, I think that anyone that had any specific formatting edits or flow edits or whatever you want to call them. I think we've aired those out. They're, they're, they're in front of Matt. We're going to have Shannon, Susan and Alex sit down. And anyone else is welcome to join that. I think that there may be some value in not overloading that process. But I, I obviously don't want to, we don't want to.
I'd like Bill to have it be, be part of this too. He's been so much a part of it all.
You guys are always volunteering each other for stuff. Why don't you let Bill volunteer for something?
Well, that's true.
You'll be fine, Susan. You can hold your own, I think, in this, in this, in this group.
I can.
Um, but I mean, if Bill wants to be there, obviously that's what I'm saying. Anyone that wants to participate. But I think, I, I do think though, and I'm, I'm saying this because I'm giving people that opportunity to do that if you feel passionate about it. But I feel it's the people who really want to be there have already volunteered to be there. So I think it's good to just not have anybody there that's just like, well, I'll do it because maybe that's, you know, maybe I'll be able to help a little bit. I think people who are like, hey, I got an idea of how I want to, you know, help this process. I think those are the people that really want to be there. Yeah, exactly. So we've got, we've got some ideas on what we want to edit the document with. I think we should keep in the back of your minds while you're working on this, keep an eye on shortening the document, not lengthening the document. Whenever it can go in with the other, I would shorten it. That's my, that's my preference in this situation.
I hear that. Can you do the same thing in a paragraph rather than a page?
Right, right. Or, yeah, and cut, you got a paragraph that's this long? If you can cut it down to half and take out some stuff that maybe you don't think is as pertinent, do that, whatever.
First of governmental writing.
Well, it's like, it's like when you're writing a paper for college, you know, you get to the habit of just like, how can I make this longer?
I mean, you get credit for having more pages.
I didn't write, I didn't write more words. I just, I, I made the font bigger and my professors didn't usually catch that.
Change all the spacing. It's all good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just, just one point eight instead of one point five.
That'll make it work. Now that's, that's, I think, I think you guys had some really awesome points. I'm trying to get a capture of like some of the policy, things that I, I believe are the problems. So I think the first thing I'm seeing is the traffic study. I think zoning is another one. And then is there anything else that you guys think I'm missing in terms of, I guess, like policy, like acceptability of this to the people of Scottsville? One of the things that I'm hearing, you mentioned this early on, was clearly flagging like the community's goals versus the capital T towns commitments. There's a bunch of things that we would like to see happen that we're not committing to do with tax dollars. So we got to be clear about, you know, town council is adopting this plan and should be expected to budget for this, this and this. But there's ten other things that the town cannot afford to do. And we either require developers to do them or find some agency partner to take care of it or encourage residents to volunteer and do something. But the town's ability to realize this plan all on its own is going to But the town's ability to realize this plan all on its own is going to be pretty limited. So I think that's an interesting libertarian policy question of what kinds of things can we do or develop by raising taxes and spending money? And what kinds of things are we comfortable requiring businesses and property owners to just do?
Well, and I think we can make that clear distinction, particularly with terms of new development. As to what are, what are the developers' responsibilities? And I also think, Matt, your, your point about collaborating with, with, with other partners is, is really, really important, particularly Albemarle County. They can give us a lot of guidance and, um, as well as good technical information. And I just think it would be good to insert Scottsville as the founding place of Albemarle County, back into Albemarle County's, uh, fight lines.
Scottsville just needs to marry a, a really wealthy benefactor and just, you know, we need to, it's still a lot of money, that's what.
Well, who knows? You know, someone may come floating down the James River.
Right. So, all right. So, so, um, if, if there's not, if there's not anything specific, uh, well, let me rephrase that. If there's anything else that anybody wants to cover before we wrap up, let's do that. I would like to adjourn the meeting fairly soon here. Well, not adjourned, but I want to discuss our next meeting and then, um, and then close with that fairly soon here. So I'll give us, let's say, two minutes to run through anything else that we want to run through real quick.
Yeah, just a comment about getting that Albemarle County involved. All the real estate taxes of any kind of new residential development goes to them. So we think that we might be able to encourage get them to kind of chip in on something, do you know, all the money goes to them. This has been out in our county development within Scottville, but they take the money, we don't. So I think we need to kind of push that to them. That, you know, this is going to put more money in their pockets than you can kind of kick in. So I don't, I don't need to threaten it.
I think you have, I think you have to take into consideration the fact that Charlesville has developments much, much bigger than anything we're probably doing down here. So they're probably not like woohoo, but I think it's still a valid point because it is something and it's something that they don't have to put a lot of work into, but maybe they can, they can, you know, redirect some, some, some resources our way.
This, this table of who's responsible for what doesn't identify the county as responsible for doing anything. So maybe we should find some way to, uh, yeah, commit. Not the city.
Yes, it do.
Well, sure, through revenue change.
It's beneficial to them, not us.
All right.
Well, if they want to give it back, if it's so small, we'll take it.
Um, okay. So a, any other comments before we move on to the planning next meeting and adjournment phase?
I just want to mention that maybe we can get Lindsay involved a little bit more, give her input. She, she has a lot of good ideas initially. She, maybe she could make this leave, but maybe she should be part of the final editing or input.
She's, she's working late tonight, um, but I'll, I'll share this reporting with her and, uh, keep her posted on progress. She sends her regrets.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we want anyone, anyone that wants to participate, you know, specifically anyone from planning commission that wants to participate, you know, we've made sure that everybody's in the loop on that. Some people are able to make it, some people aren't. Lindsay definitely adds a lot to the, the meeting. So hopefully she'll be able to consider it in the next one. Okay. So let's, let's, um, Matt, do you want to kind of offline plan out your, your meeting with Susan, Shannon and Alex? And then you guys can figure out a time to sit down and do that.
Yes, I'll, I'll check that scheduling with them and, um, create the, the group to notify of when we're doing what. And, um, even for meetings in my office, um, I can turn the camera on and share it for anybody who wants to do virtual.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. The, um, anyone that's not committing to do the, to that, to do that meeting, the one with you four, um, who just pops in, I think you should keep them muted and just let them type into the, uh, into the text box if they have any thoughts. There's a few members in the public that will come in and just not realize what the protocol is and it's not their fault, but they'll jump in and they'll be like, hey. All right. So that's, that's set. Um, we'll set another meeting to, um, review the doc, the revisions that you guys have done, um, as well as do one more session of a little more technical stuff. And let's look at and see what, uh, what date works for everybody on that.
Your, um, planning commission regular meeting is, um, I think the fifth of October and it's a pretty light agenda except for the public hearing on, uh, side of things.
Are you suggesting doing it on Monday? Is that what you're saying?
We could, we could just use Monday the fifth.
Very efficient of you.
Works smarter, harder.
Yeah. Well, it would give us a firm, a firm, uh, stop time. Uh, I mean, if we can do Monday at 5:30, if everyone can be here at Monday at 5:30, then we can, that gives us an hour and a half to, to bash through all that. And then I can spend three and a half hours on a, on a conference call in one night. That's fine.
Though, right, because the rest of that planning commission meeting, knock on wood, fairly short.
So, so anybody objecting to Monday the fifth at, uh, 5:30?
Uh, yeah, I'm, what, what I meant is just make it and make it part of the 7pm agenda. Do the, do the minutes of the public hearing work that title through this market item and then just dedicate the planning commission meeting to small area plan.
I don't like that. Everybody there, everyone's planning, leaving available, set it on Monday. I, I don't like that idea. It's,
Okay.
It's, it's going to have a whole different structure. Josh is going to, Josh is going to be in charge of it. He doesn't know what we've been doing. He doesn't really get a sense for that. I, it's going to be restructured entirely. I just don't like that.
No, that makes sense to have the, because we're sitting around the table here and then, um, you know, going, going up there and doing a formal public hearing is a different mood.
It, it might be worthwhile to encourage planning commission members to show up an hour and a half early and participate in this meeting, but I think that I would still like to have it as a separate, it's on separate. So Matt, are you okay with 5:30 on Monday or do you? Or given, given that we're not doing it at seven and merging the meetings, do you want to do a different day? Is that, is that going to still work for you?
No, I'm fine. And that gives us, um, you know, two weeks from now is October 1st. So that's plenty of time to huddle up, work the document and then send it out with the planning commission agenda.
Okay.
Unless anybody wants to move faster and have a special meeting before the end of September.
No, I think that's fine. I guess it's time to get it approved. Well, that's going to, that's going to mean we're not going to have it in front of, uh, the only problem with that is it, it would be nice if we had that meeting to have it in front of planning commission by that meeting, but obviously, you know, that wouldn't be possible, which means planning commission wouldn't be able to review it until November, which means, well, I guess, no, they could still get it in front of town council in November. They would just, they would just have to get it to them within a week.
If you, if you voted on something November 2nd, town council could look at it at their work session November 9th.
Okay. So we can still get it to them by November, either way. Okay. So I think everyone, everyone on, on remote has confirmed that, um, October 5th at 5:30 works for them. Um, anyone in the room have an issue with that time?
It's, it's a, it's a little hard for me to get here at 5:30, but start without me. I'll be here by 6:00.
We can, we can also, uh, spend some money on food for that meeting since our planning commission is going to be here for three hours through dinner time. We have a little bit of money left.
I love it. Let's spend the taxpayer money.
That's what it's for.
I may not be able to participate October 5th. I'm going to be out of town for work.
September 5th?
No.
It's October 5th. September 5th is over, that's. Everybody stay away from Tommy's got the COVID.
I, I can see, I might be able to go to Starbucks and log in that and do it, do the meeting from there. But I'm not sure if I'll be able to do that. Uh, I'll just have to, I have to see.
Let's find out who on planning commission can make that date. And if we have too many people that can't make it, I'd like, I like having three people from planning commission at all these. It just seems to work well. That, that, that we have a good representation of planning commission. So if for some reason we can't get, um, Lindsay on the next one, Lindsay and Lisa on the next one. Which just sounds like Lisa, you're, you can definitely make it. You may just be a little late. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let's make sure we can at least have Lindsay or Josh. Um, am I forgetting anybody?
No, that's fine. I'll, I'll call Lindsay tomorrow.
If, if that's going to be the issue, we'll change it. Let's put it on the calendars for the fifth uh, at 5:30. And then if anything happens, uh, where we can't go third planning commission, um, then we'll go ahead and move, move the date. But for now, let's put it on our calendars.
Okay. I will, um, I will notice that.
And Matt, you'll let us know when we can get together with you and Alex and Shannon?
Yes. Um, Alex, I'll talk to you first about your, um, course schedule, um, and, uh, work with everybody else who knows it.
Matt, I'll be flexible. Whatever works for you guys. Thank you.
You're here.
All right. So I think, uh, let me just, I'm, I'm just going to take a quick peek at the agenda and make sure that we didn't skip over anything that I don't think we did. Agenda, date for next meeting. Okay. So we're good. Uh, again, this, the next meeting is, the next full meeting is going to be, um, technical stuff. So let's make sure that we have a chance to read through the revisions, um, that the, the smaller group is going to make in the meantime. And, and be prepared to talk about some of the more technical stuff, um, so that we can get our final revisions in at this bit. So, all right.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, everyone, for being on here. Talk soon.
Good night, all. Yes. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Matt. Good night. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow. Okay?
Right on. Thank you.